...to the United States of America and to the world for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to a large crowd for being here tonight. Okay, as long as we can keep Mr. Ward... A couple of routine items we have to get approved. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 14th. Accept and order file the minutes of the Committee of Special Education for the dates listed. And accept and order file the minutes of the Committee on Preschool Special Education for the dates listed. Do you have a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Heidi. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. That carries. Any public comments?
I do have something, but I've been at work since Mr. Ward here at school.
Okay. Perfect. We change our order around tonight. We're going to move to the superintendents.
Yes, so several items on there. We're actually going to split my report into pieces. But first and foremost, in the room, we have our two student liaisons. So we've got them over there at the side table. We promised them that tonight will be a low-pressure opportunity for them. It'll be just introductions. We did meet yesterday, the two of them, with me and Mrs. Hogan, and talk about how we do things going through the rest of this year. So we're trying to take down like a committee structure. We will have a meeting the Monday afternoons before the board meetings. I will tell you that we're looking for a board member maybe to join us at those meetings. So I know folks are busy. But if you're interested in being a part of that and meeting with the student liaison today before the meeting. We were there about 25, 30 minutes yesterday. If I had started on time, it would have been a lot better for everybody involved if a meeting ran over. But I do want to introduce both Kennedy Hastings and Jacoby Willplant. So welcome now. Thank you so much for being here. I said low pressure, but if you want to say something now, now is your chance. If you don't, that's okay too. So I will, I will, I'm going to go to my second bullet and then I'm going to hold off. Just want to let the board members know that Schoolhouse Construction reached out to me and asked if we'd be amenable to a March 18th special board meeting to work contracts for the first phase of our project. That keeps them on timeframes, allows us to get that information out so that we can get some contractors on board. I'm hoping that you're able to do so. We can send that out. I could have Kelly send that out to see who's available and at what times. Quickly, normally do it for a special meeting. But they're pretty sure that's the date we're going to want to use because it's one week after our regular meeting. And if we wait until our April meeting, that's going to put us way behind where we need to be to get some work done this summer.
What time are you thinking?
I haven't thought about it whatsoever. But I'm happy to do regular time. I know sometimes it works better for a specific board member. If we do a 1 o'clock, I'll have Kelly send it out. If you want to throw times out now, we can. And then we're going to go on to the music department presentation. No pressure. If you want to have a conversation, I'll go for it. If you want to do my email, we can do it that way. We'll have Kelly do that. And obviously, we'll post the meeting with the proper notice and all that stuff for our public to be able to come and attend that. And you folks are certainly, as student liaisons, invited to that meeting as well as we'll let you know the time when that occurs. And one thing about these two students, they have incredibly busy schedules. We were trying to find a time during the day to meet. And Jacoby had, I would say, a little bit of time. And Kennedy had zero time during the school day. But they're taking advantage of a ton of programs here at school. So they're great people to have here talking to us from the student standpoint on how things are growing. So I'm going to skip down to the music department presentation because the best part of the night is going to be "What's Across the Street" in the auditorium for all y'all, not that you don't like listening to me. Thanks for that, Jeff. So turning it over to Diane Haber. She's the, she has announced her retirement, but she is the 34, 32...
32.
32 years here at Hudson Falls. So all yours, Diane. Thank you so much for being here. You can ask what we said. I believe the mic is on for you. If there's a green light, you're good.
Okay.
We want the folks out in the public ability area if they're watching from YouTube.
Now, I'm nervous. I think there's such a large crowd here because everybody knew I was coming. So it's been a hot minute since I've addressed the board. So I'm happy to be here. So we have some new, just giving you a little bit of an overview if you want to roll the slide. Some new things that are happening. We do have some position changes. Jackie Bedry is a second-year orchestra teacher. And she was originally hired for the middle school. And we have actually switched her. She is at the high school now. She is doing 9 through 12 orchestra and chamber. And Jesse Stevenson, he's been here a while. He is now down at the 6th grade through 8th grade level at the middle school. And it's been a really good change. I think it's, I think it's going really well. I heard, I was doing something today and I heard the orchestra and I, and I thought it was a recording. And I'm not just saying that. I was really impressed. So it's going well. And one of the really nice things about that is that has allowed us to offer another music elective. So we have music enjoyment, which is offered to 9th and 10th graders, which Jackie teaches. And Carleen Higgs, she is the band teacher. She does the music appreciation, and that is for 11th and 12th graders. And I actually taught music appreciation for probably 20-plus years. And my biggest complaint always was, you probably know, there is a huge difference between the 9th grader and a 12th grader. So sometimes it was challenging trying to find the right fit for, you know, those classes that have all four grades. So it's really nice that it can be split up for the 9th and 10th graders and the 11th, 12th graders. So that's really great. And something even more exciting, next year, we are offering, and I'm calling it an adaptive music enjoyment for the success in the SOAR students. And so what they will be doing is they will be coming next year in place of the music enjoyment. So I think the plan is to rotate that on a every other year basis. So one year do the success in SOAR, and then next year do the music enjoyment. So the kids will still be able to take it in 9th and 10th grade, 9th or 10th grade. And then those SOAR and success kids can have a music class. So that's really exciting. And what's really nice for me is when I brought it to Jackie, who will be teaching it, she was very excited. She is, she loves the idea. So that just, you know, that made me happy. So that's one nice thing. Sure.
I don't even know what those are. What do they do in those classes?
You want to do it or you want me to?
So in the music classes?
The enjoyment and the appreciation. It sounds super cool. I just have no idea what...
Yeah, so it's general music. And they do, they do a lot of different things. They do a lot of music history. They do hands-on stuff, too. They do soundtrack, which is like, if you have i-Garage Band, it's like a web-based garage band. So they compose music. They do bucket drumming. They do musical theater units. They do rock and roll units. So it's a lot of history, but it's also a lot of hands-on. There's a piano unit right now. And let me tell you, I'm in the office right next to it. And so sometimes I have to leave because we don't have a piano lab. So it's like 10 pianos in the room. But you know what? They're doing it and it's fun. So it's nice to do the 9th and 10th grade and then leading into the 11th and 12th grade. And like I said, you can do different things with the older kids. So that's what they're doing, and it just exposes them to music.
Thank you.
So that's been fun. And then I added a couple, you have to go back. I added just a couple of the other teachers. I didn't add everybody. But we have two fairly new teachers, Brittany Plano and Ian Dingman. They are general music at the elementary level, doing 5th grade band in 4th and 5th grade orchestra. And then I also added Andrew, just because he's been here a little bit longer. But he is also elementary general, and he has started the 3rd and, 3rd through 5th grade chorus. And he is here tonight. So he will be performing for us. And I'll talk a little bit about more about that in a minute. But yeah, so we can go, one other quick thing I wanted to share that you might not know about the high school and middle school. In the band program, we have Carleen Higgs at the high school. But she goes down every Thursday, and she teaches, she goes to the middle school, and she teaches 8th grade lessons. And she does, she's there for the ensemble. And what's nice about that is that gives a face to the high school director. And it helps with transition. It helps with keeping the kids in the program. And of course, for choir, I'm just, I do 7th through 12th grade. So there isn't much of a transition. And we've always done that for orchestra. We did not do that this year for orchestra because we really wanted them to just settle into their own positions. It's new. We wanted them to really get their feet under them and settle in. And that's something we will probably look at in the future. But we do like vertical teaching because that is really a great way to keep kids in the program because nobody has to take band and nobody has to take orchestra. So we want that transition to be as seamless as possible. So that's something that we've done for a number of years. So anyways, moving on. Okay, so the elementary chorus. We started calling it a chorus, but it's really a chorus now. So in 2022 to '23, there was 22 students in 3rd grade. Now, this year, there's 42. We did move it to after-school. I do think that helped a little bit. And then the 4th and 5th grade, there was 27 students, now up to 45. And they do meet before school. And a little history, somebody that's been here forever. We used to, when I first got here, we didn't have an elementary chorus. And I thought, that's so crazy. But the reason was, back in the day, we had two 30-minute classes a week of elementary. So what they did, and some of you might even remember, I don't know if you remember singing back in the day, they would do full-grade performances, like the whole 3rd grade would sing. And, you know, salvio and get all those kids in. And full, the whole 2nd grade would sing. And it was really nice and fun. But it's a little bit more difficult with 140-minute class. So it's really great that Andrew stepped up in the startingness. And I think it's fantastic. So, and he really is doing a great job. So kudos to Andrew. Moving on. Okay, enough of the serious stuff. We've had a lot of, we've had quite a few new teachers in the department over the last 10 years, I would say. So, you know, I started thinking last year, and like, we really need to, you know, all come together and get on the same page. And so we started last year working on a scope and sequence, which is for the 4th through 12th grade, for the orchestra and the band. That was our focus last year and this year. And what that does is that just ensures consistency and continuity. We have a plan that really allows teachers to track students' progress across the board and see how they're meeting their goals, realign expectations, and also aligning with the New York State music standards. Just that clear progression of knowledge and skills. And we really wanted to just start fresh and get us all together. And I really made it clear that this was not busy work. This was really important work, and I think we all bought into it. And so I can show you on the next slide, I am not going to go into all of it because it's terribly boring, especially if you're not a music person. But if you just want to maybe click the 5th grade, anyone, you can click. And so you see, she did mid-year and end-year, listed the instruments. You know, they should have the first five notes, three, four times signature, four, four times signature. And then she did something similar for the end of the year as well. It's just she added some, you know, some tie signatures. They should be at a Lisma, Nisma, .5 to 1, you know, things like that. So we really want them to follow this. And we think that that will help. Because as you know, you know, your high school is only as good as your younger grades. So, and then if you want to just, again, I'm not, you have this if you want to look at it. If you want to go to the orchestra one, we did something similar. They put theirs on one template. And if you see at the bottom, they just listed 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th in high school. And that's how they did it. And they just did like what they should know by the end of the year. So, you know, it was interesting because we also did a high school spoken sequence, which I didn't know we were doing. And that, I didn't include that in this because there's only so much spoken sequence you need to look at. But we also did that at the high school level with our own groups, the high school band, choir, orchestra, as well as the music classes. So good work, I think. And then the next slide is just our concert reminders. And we're working right now on "Bye Bye Birdie." And as you do go into the auditorium, you'll see we, I purposely left the curtain open and we set so you could see the set. We haven't painted it yet, but it's coming together. And, you know, we have all the dates for the rest of the year. So hopefully you can make some concerts. I know some of your kids are involved. So I will see you, I'm sure. But that's really all I have for you. I hope that I didn't talk too much. Any questions?
We have a little field trip set up. We're going to go inside of the auditorium over there. You sit in the second or third row, center. That's where you're expected. And my husband's Haber, if you guys have questions afterwards and you'd like to talk to the kids, I can get ready for a couple of questions for you.
All right.
Fair enough. So, would you cut us off for the outside already? So folks sitting on the outside watching from home, you are not going to see the performance. But we'll be back in just a, we'll be back in a few minutes and take up our meeting again. So thank you.
And the goal to look at more data, Mike and I sat down and he put together like a menu. So you can see a couple of examples when you get a chance to click on those links of what you can, what we have and how we can present that to you. And then that menu will be a list of about, probably over 100 things that we can show you. So what I would say to the board is if we can, if I can get some feedback on things you want to see or if there's things that don't seem to be on the menu that you think should be, that might be something that's available, we just, that's not an exhaustive list. It's a pretty lengthy list. So we want to make sure you folks are getting the information that you want to see.
I'm so glad you clarified that because I'm so confused reading it.
Yeah. It's a long list, it's a long list, yeah.
Anything we could come up with that we might have access to, you know, a little bit of digging, a little bit of scratching, we can probably get there. But those are the things that first, that's the first hundred things that we want to see. We'll do as comprehensive as possible. The other thing, I guess I want to clarify, when we're looking at those two attendance and absenteeism charts, is I did, uh, the average daily attendance one, I did, I did three points per year. Just so you understand, if you click on it, you can see any, any of those three points per year. Just so you understand what you're looking at. The first point per year is the month of September, which is generally going to be your high point for the year. And then the second point is from September 1 through the end of January. Right, so your first five or six months of the year. And then the third point of the year is the full year. It's not three dipsticks, it's three stretches for each year. But that gives you a pretty good sense of the year and where the dips are and where the rises are and where the years fall off. That's the only thing I wanted to clarify.
I appreciate it. I'm going to tie that attendance back to the things that we're doing for young people that you folks are helping provide, like that elementary course. And you've got to see Mrs. Havering report out of the numbers. You've seen where we are and you see what the kids are getting, you hear what they said about having fun. That's been replicated across all buildings, including the high school, which is a graph that we just had up there. And that was through high school, through electives, and in pre-teen teachers as well. So I want to put that out there because I'm going to speak to, speak to it from a different angle in a little bit. I'm going to move down. So that's kind of homework to think about.
Can I just follow up on this topic before we move on? So you want us to tell Jeff, like what, 10 things from that menu that we want to know, data points? Or do you want the board to come together and say, in order for us to get an idea of what we have asked Dan to pinpoint, these are the 10 most salient details we want to see?
I think two, two things. One is, is there something missing on that, on that laundry list that you'd like to see? And the other is, what are the next, what are the top four you want to see next? Does that make sense?
Yep. As a group.
A, a, as a group.
Okay.
Ideally, we put together a year-long table. So each year, you know, maybe it's October, November, you're seeing last year's absenteeism. January, February, you're seeing this, whatever it happens to be. Whatever you throw at us, we're going to take that and try to meet it out. So you're not worried. So it doesn't feel like it'll overwhelm you in anything, or does it?
No, it's more meaningful too. Okay, thanks.
Excellent.
Ma'am?
Other questions on that topic? Crystal, are you?
Um, no, I was just going to say thank you, thank you for attaching the, like, the across New York State information.
Uh-huh. And, um, it's worth, yeah, it's worth saying that there's a couple of data points. Us versus New York, us versus the county, us versus the foothills council are some of the things because we are compared against foothills for athletics. So I'm like, well, let's do that for our other measures, academics, attendance, all that. So I appreciate Mike going through and doing that and understanding why. Just because those are the schools that we're opting compared to, so why not do it? Yes, sir.
Is that a document that we have access to as well?
Yes, we do, it's a public document, yeah.
Where do they go to find it?
So we, we spent some time the other day showing them where to go on the web to get the board docs. It's on the public facing side of the board docs, all that information. My, everything in my report is, is there.
Great.
All the links will work for them. They're not confidential. And the liaisons, we did talk about, just to refresh the board, they don't have access to confidential information. They don't participate in executive sessions. And we went over that, told them yesterday as well.
Great.
I would just, one more thing is I would say we have the administrative team here in April. That's our executive session for probationary and tenure fees. That's the best one for our, your, your teams. So if you can get me some data you want to look at by next month, I could have some visualizations for you for April. And then you'll also have a team here in case you have questions about that. That's sort of the next couple of steps in that time.
Good?
Love it.
Right, awesome. Like Mike said, we'll get that on a rotation and just get assistance built up. So it, it outlives, not outlives, but outlives Mike and I, that would be the whole thing. You have something for boards and outlives the members that are around the table too possibly. And I don't mean outlives. Outlast, that's what I'm sorry. There's a link there to the 2025, 2026 proposed school calendar. There's also a hard copy, as you see, wanted to make sure you had a hard copy. So normally, BOSI's, I wish that BOSI's would have approved their calendar. Last month, they had, they changed their procedure. They're not approving theirs until their meeting's tomorrow night, is it? Tomorrow night. But we did get the final draft going to the board tomorrow night, so we can update ours for you this evening. So that is the draft that I'm proposing to all of you for approval this evening. And it is based on matching up with the BOSI's calendar. You can see that the two weeks of Christmas occurs again. You can see where everything, everything's.
Good Friday, I noticed.
What's that?
I noticed the Good Friday is back.
Good Friday is back because it occurs, um, Easter occurs before break, or this year. Break occurs before Easter, so Friday is, Good Friday's swallowed by the break. So there's, there'll be a motion later on to approve that calendar. We want to make sure the chance to look at it. I know you don't have a lot of time. There's not a lot we're going to do to change that because we want our students to have access to programs that are part of the BOSI's. So if we go off that, our kids miss that instruction. And then there was a request to possibly reveal from public comment. That's, that's totally up to you, sir.
Yes.
But we did have someone who was next door for the performance and didn't have an opportunity a few minutes ago. Yes.
Hi, I know I'm next to her, my name's Deanne Beagle. This is my second year as vice president of the TPFA K35. My daughter was one of the little music singers in that room. I was going to bring this up to you guys, and I, but it was very nice to do it. I'm really just here to talk about sixth grade chorus, third and the fourth. And I don't know if there are any rumors, a scheduling issue. I have class from Mr. Snyder, I know that his play is very cool. I don't know the musicals in the future, I know you all do, I know she does so much, I know it's a lot, she's got a lot going on. But how, you know, he makes it, right? And they start third grade, fourth, and it gets thick. I don't know, I feel like they could be the first in years for some kids, it's like a great first thing, you know? I don't know what to do, what to do about it. I don't know if it's something that's going to be added into stuff with the eighth, or something that's separate. I don't know. I was thinking maybe the first year, I think there's another seventh, third, or sixth, third chorus? I don't know, maybe the fourth, but I don't know.
I'm, I'm not sure.
I don't think we've ever had three, four, five choruses.
Oh, that's correct.
It's always been a seven, 12 program. And the addition of Mr. Snyder, he's brought that along, so three, four, five.
So we just now, because we have that now, now we have a gap?
Yeah, but you can see how much we love it. I don't know, my daughter actually has a privilege of being one of the all-coming. It was really special, I don't know, they just love it.
You okay, Mike? Do you have a quick response?
Absolutely.
So, as you know, we have a pretty robust set of athletic programs. Anytime somebody, and anybody around the table already knows this, what I'm going to say. Anytime somebody mentions athletics, I always mention arts. So I'm, I'm happy to, if, I know the board's on board because I know where we, we all land on this thing, to have a conversation with Mrs. Havering, who's the, the chair of the department, who did the presentation, who played the piano in there about, about that. She's, if she could add two sixth grade choruses and two seventh grade, she, she would do it. So I'm not sure what the limiting factors are up here, to be honest with you. Yeah, appreciate the, appreciate the comment.
Do seven and eights go together? Are they, they're.
She did, Mrs. Havering goes over to do that. Yeah, I'm just not sure what the difference is with the sixth grade.
Well, the problem, I think, is that sixth grade is continued, is considered elementary yet, right?
And they're teamed and, yeah, there's, it's, there's some differences in.
Yeah, scheduling.
What has to happen for elementary students, first one has to happen for high school students with number, junior high through high school students with a number of minutes in certain classes. So, yeah. It's worth a lot, appreciate it, yeah. What grade, what grade is your daughter in now?
She's going in.
She'll be in sixth, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Did you, did you guys have a chance to look at the calendar?
If you, if you guys are, that's, that's, you guys are ready, if you don't have any questions about it, Mike and I, we can answer questions about the calendar. If not, I'm just going to have a resolution to approve it.
Do you have any questions, Chris? Okay, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the 25, 26 school calendar. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Second? Maggie? And second by Crystal? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Okay. Pating at the lady first. I see how it is. Okay, that moves us to our committee portion of the meeting, to personnel, Mr. Page.
Notable this month is we have 11 individuals retiring from the district. Seven teachers, three support staff with teacher and assistant. Six of them have over 30 years' experience. Three of them have 35 years' experience. And in total, 292 years with the district. So congratulations to those and unfortunate for us to lose them.
I want to say, so there was one pair that came over to take a photo. They were very, very happy and, and very fulfilled by the career they've had here. But they let me know that they started as roommates in college. One from Long Island, one from Newcombe, New York. And then came here and worked 35 years at Hudson Falls and turned in their retirement letters on the same day. So that's just cool, right? Wow, that's a great, wow, that's a great work. But I digress to what else, whatever else you have, Mr. Page.
I have, the rest of the, uh, agenda is normal for this time of the month, so those are the notable portions. Anybody have any question?
Any questions? Okay, so that carries. That moves us to athletics, Mr. Page.
All righty. So a couple of quick winter updates. Our bowling team won the foothills championship, second straight year. It was actually a tie with Southland's Falls. They had used the foothills tournament as the tiebreaker. Hudson Falls won by seven things. It was tight. So congrats to them. Wrestling team took second place at the CCs. Great job there. They have nine wrestlers that will be competing as essentials. So good luck to all of them. We did have a few individuals that took first place in that tournament. We have Jovi Marrero, Carter Donovan, and Justin Mullis. Great wrestlers. Jovi and Carter both, I think, one's freshman, one's a sophomore. Doing a great job, watching them wrestle. If you haven't had a chance, go check them out, Carter at least.
It's a little scary to watch them. Yeah. It's a little scary.
And if you're not familiar with wrestling, you start texting somebody constantly. May or may not have happened. Girls' ice hockey playing in sub-regional this Thursday in Brewster, section one. We do have one female on that team. I think I saw ice hockey was on here too. Yeah, so coming up, we have sectional events and tournaments. Boys' swimming indoor track this weekend, boys' hockey next week over break. We have four participants on that team. Basketball and cheer will be after break. I did miss one thing. We also have to give a shout out to Daniel Carpenter, who took first place in the 55-meter hurdles at the foothills indoor track championships. Congrats to everybody on making seasons. Spring sports registration will be coming up next week for JV and varsity. First practice March 17th. If you're Irish, bad day for you. Modified registration will open March 3rd, start date of March 31st. And we do have one proposal that came out of the New York State Committee that they're going to start school sports Monday, August 18th. That wasn't approved. So it's a bit earlier than normal, about a week earlier. So that's that. Last thing I want to end on, we do have a new policy or procedure.
Procedure.
Procedure. Talking about how to get like new sports teams going. We're going to distribute this house so everybody has access to it. Doesn't need to be approved, just for everybody to go in. And that came from the request for a flag football team. Any questions?
There's one senior night left. If you're looking for a date for Valentine's, the boys' basketball senior night is this Friday. And last night was the girls'. They had a, they had a very close game, they did not end up winning, but there was a really nice recognition ceremony for the girls ahead of time. I expect you'll see the same for the boys on Friday. So if you're looking for that date night, there it is. Moves a couple have food for sale.
Any questions, Mike? Athletics, move to audit, Mrs. Page.
Okay, so getting into budget season, so there was quite a bit this month. I will go over most of this and then I'll probably hand it over to Kevin for budget stuff. So starting with the treasurers report, this is for the month of December. We had 3.7 in receipts in the general fund and 7.1 in disbursements. There was, I think, an extra payroll that came out and also bond, bond payments. So it's a little bit higher on disbursements. And then, so that leaves us with a total cash on hand of 9.8 million, but that's just in a good financial position. The extracurricular account balances are also in your packet. A lot of just normal activity for this term of year. Where do I go find them? I guess I don't need to look at my papers, huh? But if you have any questions on that, just let us know. Oh, no, we didn't have them because we reported them last month. That's right, just got to read my notes. Monthly bills are in there if you have any questions on those. We did have, our fiscal stress came in, the fiscal stress rating and the environmental stress rating. Those were both no, what's the word?
Designation.
No designation, thank you. So that's good. That's just looks at our, just some different metrics that the state looks at. And then they determine whether you get certain points for different criteria. And so we did not have enough points to have designation, which is a good thing that we want. So that was good. And we do have a approval for a disposal of a van for scrap. It's very obsolete at this point. I think it's been moved down to all different jobs and is now at the end of its rope. So that is just in there for approvals. I think that it's other than, and then I guess, can you talk also about the internal audit? Internal, internal audit as well?
Sure, each year, we have to have our internal audit. Alan Pringle does it, and he's a former State Controller's Office employee. So he's been here for a couple of weeks on and off. Last Friday, he completed it. He is doing it on payroll, which obviously is a big ticket item for this school district. He's completed it. And within the next week, we should have the report, so we'll have that for the March meeting. I was going to invite him to the March audit meeting, but he will be in Florida. So that's one of the reasons why we haven't done so early was to get it before he went. But I can tell you as a precursor, it went very, very well, the audit. So, but we'll be sharing that at the March meeting, the internal audit report. And we'll do that also at the March audit committee meeting. The other item is budget 25, 26. We have started budget. And basically, once the, once the governor comes out with her proposal for state aid, that's, that's our, our starting point. So what we've done is, the governor's proposal came out. We, I'm hoping there's going to be money added to the governor's proposal. We're at 2%. So basically, any school district, every school district was guaranteed at least 2% were how the formula runs. And we're at the 2%. Obviously, there was some tweaks made to the formula. We're, there's a webinar tomorrow with state aid planning, which they're going to talk about some of those tweaks that are made. We don't have the backup data to see it right now, so we'll, we'll be able to get more information on that tomorrow. So we were looking at 2% of foundation aid, which, that's $600,000. And as I talk a little bit more about some of the expenditures, we have several expenditures that are going up by more than $600,000. So, so the, the governor's proposal is the starting point for us. And this is very early in budget season. It's the starting point. Generally, what happens from there is districts will get more money on top of that. So it's the low end on the revenue piece. Whereas when we start doing the budget, we build a framework of the budget and we put everything in that we want, including new positions, new programs, things like that. So we start with the low end of the revenue and we start with the high end of the budget. So at this point in time, there is a, there is a rather significant gap between the revenue and the expenditure plan for over the next two months. That will start to close as we get an idea, a better idea of the additional revenues that will be coming in. But then also, we'll start paring back some of the things in the budget and meet in the middle somewhere to have a balanced budget. But some of the things that are occurring in this year's budget is health insurance for large increases, health insurance and drug card. And it's not so much the health insurance. The health insurance, we're looking at roughly a 10% increase in the health insurance itself. That's about standard nowadays for increases in health insurance plans in fact. There's neighboring communities that where you're seeing that much higher than that 10%. What is really hitting us is the drug card. The drug card is, is projected to go up at a very substantial rate this year and possibly the following year. So we're going to have to address that in this budget. We also, we're seeing an increase in bonds. We borrow money for capital projects that start to come on, the bond payments are starting to come on. That's not so much of a big issue because we get a corresponding building aid payment. So we also have contractual salary increases from all the contracts that we settled two years ago. Those are all built in. So just when you look at those three, that $600,000 doesn't touch those three. So a couple, few other items that we have in there, we have a new ELA program. We have several new teaching positions and also continuation with a new furniture program that we have. And basically, what, what occurs here is as we start to get an idea on the revenue and we start building into that, we will start trimming things away in our budget. And we will basically have an à la carte list. So when the final revenue numbers come in, we'll have things prioritized that if we do have enough money, we just start going down that list and putting those in to, to meet the, the goals and standards that we're, that we're looking for. So at this point in time, we're watching the legislative and government negotiations. As they move forward, a lot of stuff leaks out where they're looking to go when it comes to state aid. So we'll start to have a better idea of that. But like I said, it's still very early in the process and, and by April, I'm sure that we'll be, we'll have, we'll be able to present you with a, with a budget that, that meets the needs of what we're looking for and be able to fund it, so. You ready for questions?
Thank you, Ben. You got the ball in here? Just for your court.
So it's in the record. The van is a 2,006 with 276,616 miles on it. It's for the boyers upon approval of the board for $500 in scrap. It has served us well.
Any questions for Crystal?
Chevy didn't want to do a commercial with us.
We'll reach out.
Okay, we have two resolutions. Be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the disposal of the 2006 Chevy van, the numbers attached, for scrap as it no longer is repairable within mileage standards, the words said. Do you have a motion? Mike, is I can invite Amanda? All in favor? Opposed? That carries. The second one, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the tax refund in the amount of $1,999.49 for the property at 1086 Happy Road in Fort Everly. Do you have a motion?
So.
Seconded by?
Second. Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Yep, and we need a motion to approve the December treasure report. Do you have a motion? Amanda, seconded by?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, that carries. That concludes audit, needs to transportation, Dr. Steele.
This month, we had eight out of eight buses pass inspection. That keeps our inspection rate at 100% still. We had 3,100 miles just over of trips. You can read about the trip report there. We had a injured driver return this month. We talked about that in the past. We're able to hire another mechanic to our team who also has a licensed CDL, so that should help on two ends. We talked about a lift broken last month. We've got some parts ordered for repair. Hopefully, that gets repaired soon. Quick note on our fleet status, bus 150, we talked about that last month. That's back in working order. And 158 is sent up for repair, no word on that yet. The big news of the month is we've had some continued discussions on the GPS system we talked about two months ago. Kevin's got enough data for us on that right now.
We've made some real progress when it comes to GPS on, on a van, buses. Our current routing software is something called TransFinder. And basically, it works for the, for the school district. There's three or four different GPS companies out there to use for, to use that on buses. And there's a multitude of different services that can happen. We've been going through, talking to different districts, finding out which ones they have. We had a webinar with TransFinder, who actually has GPS software. And what's nice about that is it links directly with, it's the same company, it links directly with our current routing software. So we had a, we had a webinar the, the other day, met with the rep to discuss the district needs. We kind of laid out everything that we want, that we were looking for. And basically, what it is, what we're looking at at this point in time is there's a tablet that gets mounted on the dashboard on two brackets, and it has a GPS in the tablet. And what's nice about that is a lot of times, if we have DOT inspections or something like that, we have to pull buses out of service, they can't do those runs, and we bring in a spare bus. Well, that tablet goes from bus 171 to bus 155. So when we're tracking it or we get impaired notifications, it doesn't, the bus number doesn't matter because it goes with that run. So, so those are, those are mounts, they're all DOT-approved mounts. It also has a swipe card system on it, so you can either do it like almost like a credit card machine or like a key fob where the student would have an ID when they get on the bus. What's nice about that, because if somebody forgets theirs, especially if the, well, breaks kid as well, if somebody forgets theirs, it has pictures of the student on, on the tablet. So the driver can mark them in with a touch, with a touchscreen. So that's nice, it's a nice backup in case something like that happens. And the touchscreen's, that's right, there's a navigation system for rerouting. So if buses are out and they, they get stopped, there's an accident or something like that, the navigation system will actually reroute them to the quickest way to maintain the route right from the dashboard. And it, and we're also even the new daily reports that are generated into it. Ties, like I said, ties it nicely to our TransFinder routing system. We're starting to, we're getting quotes on these too, and these are, it's a significant investment. By the time we're all in on one of these, you're going to be roughly $100,000, okay? Now, what's nice is this is purchased through our transportation. So before we purchase it, what we do is try to get approval from the state to get our transportation A ratio on it, which it should do most of these. I worry about like the cars, if they're going to kick things like that out, but that's, that's $2,000 out of the whole thing. You know, it's, it's, so we're starting to work through that process. We actually have a, another webinar with TransFinder where we're setting up the other ones. And Mr. Roth will be at that one, that's Thursday. Because what I want to make sure is on our end, when we start giving out all the information for GPS and everything, we need to make sure everything's protected and it's done in a safe way. And that's where Dan will come in and review the system with the tech to make sure we can line this up and have it in a very safe manner for everybody to use. So one of the things, I was just telling Brian before the meeting, like most technology, the tablets are on like a six to eight week lag right now to get them. So once we make a decision, we're, we'd be looking somewhere in April to, to start to install things. But we also have to do a lot of training with drivers in order to make this work and make it work as efficiently as possible. So we are looking to go down that road. Like I said, the $100,000 is the first year. And then basically, all the softwares and everything that you need moving forward drops down to $30,000 a year. So that's not, that's not too much more than what we already paid for the regular routing software. So it seems, it seems. So it seems, it seems doable. I think it's something that if we can put that in, we probably should move forward with it. I think it only helps us when it comes to transportation, but we just have a few things to work out. But we've, we've made some pretty good progress since the last time we spoke about it.
Kevin, transportation aid for items that are allowed to be aided for Hudson Falls?
90% of the aidable expenses.
Just want to say it out loud. Thank you.
So would this take the routing software, would that take place of the old thing?
Works in conjunction with it. Yep. And it's actually an upgrade in the current routing software we have, so.
Is there a public facing side? They download an app, they can see buses, kids, their, their.
Sure. What will happen is, is once this is up and running, a message will be sent with an app in it and they can go into the app and then you can actually see that, okay, my child's bus is three stops down from where he's here right now. So it's, it's, I think it's, you know, just your regular day-to-day stuff. Think about those days where we, the roads are slow because of weather or something like that. You can at least see that the buses has come in and it's slowed down, so. And it's a win-win. It's great for us to know, to see the movements and everything like that of a bus. It's a, the more, the more I see this in board, it's a, it's a win-win for everyone.
Will this be able to make things more efficient for our routing planning? And will it show us areas where there's more like traffic congestion that we may have to avoid?
It'll, it'll help with routing, but we also are looking at, we have another company that we're looking, we're looking to do it this summer to actually have the new software in and then also do an efficiency study with our routes. Because as we have fewer and fewer drivers, routes get longer and longer. And what we would like to do is maximize those to have the kids on the buses as little as possible. So once we get this in, we have all of the, all of the technology to do it, then bring in somebody that, from the outside, just look at the routes because it's, it's good to have a fresh set of eyes from the outside on things. And just look at our routes and see, can we change routes in a different way to make them shorter? Can we reroute buses? Can we change the bus that we currently have? And do them in a different manner or something.
Does, does this system, I guess I have a question. Would the kids also have access to an app to like, to know where the, where the bus was? I'm just thinking about older kids that, you know, get themselves on and off the bus, like if it was late or some, something like that.
To be honest with you, I, I'm not sure I can find that up. I'll ask that question on, aren't that dumb, I'll ask that question on Thursday.
Yeah, and I just, and then the other, the other question was, shoot. Oh, like also if you're, and maybe there wouldn't be any benefit in this because I know you have to provide a route, but like if a kid, for instance, isn't going to ride that day or something, like is there a notification that would go to the bus driver or whatever? So they have a heads up they don't?
Yep, and there's also notifications. One of the nice things about the swipe coming in is if the kid's not supposed to be on that bus, it comes up, it turns red and puts a note in there. So, yeah, and we can also tie into, you know, kids that have to have a parent present. When we drop off, we can, I can ask that question. We could color code those to help the driver. Like let's say we have a substitute bus driver on there that's not used to it. It'll color code it so when Kelly Henzel comes up and it's green, we know that we have to have a parent for that child too, so.
Will you see any efficiency? I know like with, usually at the beginning of the year, we get a paper that says like, is your kid riding the bus and all that kind of stuff? Like is there a way to maybe, God help the bus garage, that takes all those in and tries to figure all that out? Like are there, automate some of that?
There's a lot to the system. I'm guessing that something like that is built right in that system because we print the letters on TransFinder now. So I guess it would be upgraded and we will be able to handle that where we send those out, the letters, the sitter letters, if we have to go to a different, different location.
Or even if parents could just log in and you didn't have to.
There's some functionality, so I only looked at it in the first time. There's some functionality for forms to be completed through the system.
Yes, so automatically.
I don't want to get ahead of myself.
No, I know. I'm just envisioning the data entry and taking those letters and putting, and that must be.
Takes a long time.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just have one comment. My, my overarching thing would be the security of the system so that, you know, you're putting a lot of information up there to make sure that does not fall into the wrong hands. That, for me, that's probably the most important thing because it's keeping this data secure.
Exactly, and that's why our second meeting is with Dan, to be there to make sure that, like I said, it's great for the school, it's great for the parents, but what we don't want is somebody to have access to something that they shouldn't have access to or be able to track or boss or kids that they shouldn't be. And that's before we step forward. Everything looks great, let's go, let's go. Well, we just, we got to make sure that that piece is in. And we can, we can reassure that because as, even as we move forward with this stuff, we're going to be playing safeguards in to make sure that that's taken care of because we have a lot of data that's in school tool and stuff on, on who can be blocked and all, that we're going to have to tie into the system to make it run right and make sure we protect it.
No questions for Brian? Okay, we have these transportations building in progress.
Yep, so we met on the 15th of January. I guess I'll talk about the capital project first. We are still on track for March submittal to State Education Department. There's still some fine tuning going on. They were able to save a little bit of money for a less expensive option for high school cafeteria ceiling, so that's nice because then through other places in the project will absorb that. And there are actually at the end linked the cafeteria renderings. The, they're working through the logistics of where to set up the temporary kitchen because that's looking like it's probably going to last at least 14 months in this building where they have to be served at an alternate location, so they're trying to get that right. Phase two, at the time of our meeting, we hadn't gotten information back on whether there was approval on phase two.
Not yet.
Okay. And then phase one, work in progress, you know, and then just kind of waiting for, bringing some of it. So in-house work, Joe Manny gave us a quick update. We have some ongoing security maintenance, leg testing. I know in the primary school, there's still a sync that's, oh, you have an update?
So he, Joe sent an email to Kevin and I, it's the day of yesterday. Everything now has been remediated to the standard, so we have no outlets that are deemed non-portable at this point.
How often, I did want to ask how often it's pre-tested? Is it annual or three years?
Three years. For good for three years was the last line in his, in his email.
Okay. Right. Maintenance around the schools was supposed to wrap up in January. I'm assuming that did go through and get finished. There was a little bit of boiler warranty work and some pool maintenance things. The energy performance contract lighting, they were trying to time some testing out of gym lighting in with the basketball schedule, so they didn't miss any of that up. And we talked about a bus lift, but is that off?
Yep, that's our, our mechanic found somebody who will actually repair it and they have the parts in stock, so that should be happening within the next few weeks. We're very busy right now, but that was, we're going to try that before replacing the lift. So that's a major cost difference with a quick repair versus taking, taking everything out. So that was very good news. It was very good by our mechanic, by our mechanic.
And the last thing I had was just the purchase of potential properties, the Hogan property, I think we have an update tonight, and then the bunker property, Kevin did make contact, but it's a slow walk to.
Yep, we haven't, nobody's come in yet to talk to us, yeah.
We met with him in his driveway two weeks ago now, Kevin and I, but hey, we'll go to, if the mountain, if the mountain goes to Moses, I don't know what that saying is, but we went over there and talked to him.
That's all I have.
Did you guys check out?
If we haven't seen it very, just have Mike, I'll have Mike pop them up on the big screen. I have a paper copy, we can pass those around too. Do not have, we can, we can just pass this around while the meeting's open. It's, it's really, really nice. One thing I'll say before somebody else points it out is folks who are there want, oh, it's been changed in this. The tiger paws on the floor are all going in the same direction and people wanted to go from where the kids enter in the correct direction so people know how to walk now here, but it's, it's awesome. Yep, so then you show, you're looking at what the small cafeteria renderings will be like. We're still talking colors because the neon green isn't the favorite of somebody who sits in the audience at most meetings. At a, yeah, at a future day.
A women.
You may see a different shade of gray or a darker colored green. The worry with a dark green is that it sucks the light out of the room and wants to be bright for kids. That's a serving line. Where the tiger head is, that's where the kids can come in and they go. That mirror image is basically in either direction, just like they do now. The one thing about the tiger, just to manage expectations is, I think Steve advised us that there's like five colors in that tiger and the most they can do is four. So two of the oranges might need to be the same, so it might not be as much.
Just take out the green one.
Contrast. There's, there's something, I don't have it exactly right, but there's something about that. And you can just see it from the angle looking back in from where the kids will go up in the large cafe going that way. Kudos to Jim Murray for design. Kudos to, come on, Dan, to Steve Wickman from March Associates too. It really was impressive to see those renderings. We're getting there. And that's work for not the summer, in a few months, but a year and a few months away. That 14 months that will be shut down. And really two options for the temporary kitchen. We thought we were going to do the wrestling room, which also displaces that, which is difficult, but we've got to do what we've got to do to get to the end of this project. We're now looking at possibly having a mobile kitchen or an outdoor, a trailer kitchen outside, which might be a better option based on the amount of electricity and something that would have to be rerouted to the wrestling room area. So we don't have a final answer yet. I'll bet it's make a headset, but those are the two options we're looking at. Do you want to see everything, fast those around?
I have a quick question. Is the, I haven't been in the cafeteria in a long time, but is, are they going to be changing the way that they're serving meals? Like it looks like there was just a lot more space for.
So what happens, so right now the kids, you walk in and there's less space, probably like when you were in high school. When you push the serving line back and now kids can walk to this side and get their food or go back to the serving line way. So they go to the, where it's green, or they go to the outside wall. Right now the kids go around almost into the kitchen on the backside of that serving line. That's a, that's something that Jim Murray was pretty adamant about. Let's separate the people preparing the food and the ovens from where the kids walk through. So we believe we'll be able to serve students as quickly so they can get the food in half their time for lunch and for it to be safer as far as burn hazard with kids being in around the equipment. My concern about the next hazard is a slip hazard when you go out to put food out here and just spill something, but it's a great to keep that place clean.
Yep.
Any other questions? You have approved the policy? We did not have a meeting this morning. Is there anything you wanted to cover on?
I would just say that we are expecting our annual policy audit any day now, I think, any day, so that, when that comes, that's always a pile of policies to review. And I do also have three or four that I need to change over here and there, but all the not, though, it's still actually, no reason, all you guys have to change. And.
The evidence two acts.
And you lucky ducks don't get to hear me tonight because I'm passing the microphone to Dan and Crystal because they have been working their tails off advocating for it while everything is in session.
Joe, do you want me to start?
Yeah, go.
I'll probably start, can't finish because.
Okay.
So, and there's, and there's, one of the agendas from one of the meetings is linked in your, in your board docs, so you can see it. So last Friday, I'll go with that one. We met with Matt Simpson and actually I had Whitehall and Granville come and join that meeting. It was a good meeting. Kevin and Mary Kay were also there and we were able to go through what's, what's happened to Hudson Falls over the last 15 years with Foundation Aid and how that maybe some of the narrative that their, our legislators are hearing about from other schools isn't the same narrative of Hudson Falls. As a matter of fact, we are a huge outlier from that narrative. The narrative is, for most people, that we should be concerned about hold harmless and we should be concerned about do minimums. So that has actually hurt Hudson Falls immensely over the last 15 years. And I've used the number a few times, last 15 years, the hurt to Hudson Falls is almost $84 million. That's a lot of sixth grade courses. It's a lot of, it's a lot of, a lot of things for kids that could have happened over the last 15 years. And just to give you the, I'm just looking at it now, look at the five-year look back, Hudson Falls underfunded by 23, over $23 million. So when I say underfunded, it means that the Foundation Aid formula says, hey, based on all the factors that we use to look at to create aid for schools, Hudson Falls should get X. And every year we've been given Y, which is much, much less than what the formula said we were supposed to get, while schools around us and across the state are getting more than what the formula says they're supposed to get. We have school districts, and I'm not against any other school district. Each school needs what they need and we want all kids to have what they need to have. It's just very apparent that there's huge winners and huge losers in what the state has done over the last 15 years. Some people are overfunded by 20, 30, 50 million over the last 15 years. And they're only 25 miles from where we're sitting right now, or two miles from where we're sitting right now. So I just, I'd like to be clear about that. And our legislators, I don't know that they're, they're great people. We have great legislators that represent us, but they weren't necessarily clear on the amount of underfunded that's occurred here in Hudson Falls as, as opposed to other places and the amount of overfunding that's occurred in other places. And again, when I use those terms, I just mean what the formula said we should have got and what we actually got, not what schools need to operate, because every school would say they need every penny they've received to operate. And we're not trying to hurt other schools, but at some point, and it was now, it was the time to talk about Hudson Falls situation. So I'm going to, I'll kick it over and maybe I'll think of something else. But it lists all the people we've met with. We started with Kerry Warner and Heidi said not it. I think you should take, take Crystal down because she's on the audit committee and Crystal was there for Kerry Warner, so I don't know if you want to give a recap on that.
Yeah, I think it was a, I think it was a really productive meeting. It did, it does take time. It was very clear, I mean Kerry is always very on things and digs into the details to advocate for her constituents and it was very clear that she didn't, she certainly didn't know that, that what was being pushed through with the state aid runs and everything was not what the formula necessarily was indicating that districts were supposed to be receiving. I think a bit, quite a bit of the story is probably the hold harmless thing and as Dan said, you know, districts need what they need, but the reality is that, you know, many districts have been facing decreased enrollment and still having the same amount of funding as they had in previous years, whereas Hudson Falls has maintained our enrollment numbers. And so that money, you know, had to come from somewhere, right? So I think the allocations were just shifted away from what the formula was indicating. So that, you know, I think it was a good, as, as you said several times, we understand there's not a check waiting for us for $85 million or $84 million. But I think as they're reviewing the formula, this is the good time to bring it up so that they're aware, you know, they can ask better questions, which I think is what Kerry kind of came away from. Saying she certainly felt more informed and smarter about as they go into the review process and determine what Foundation Aid will look like in the future. It's just a good time to, to look at that and make it easier for her.
And she, she, she carries a lot of, a lot of weight in, in the legislature, so she's a great person to have on her side. The other group that Kevin, Mary Kay and I met with was NISCUS, New York State Council of School Superintendents. They're a huge advocacy and obviously they represent almost every single district superintendent is a member of that group. And they understand the financial piece of it. They understand how it occurred. They again, like a wholesale change on this where you get $84 million isn't something that's likely going to have any traction whatsoever and we understand that. But we did give them permission to use our story and even our name when they're advocating with the legislature. And so that occurred on Monday, the 3rd. By the time Matt Simpson came on the 7th, he let us know when he was down there and they were having a meeting that we were being talked about down there. So it's one of those times where it's not bad to be talked about, I guess. So the story is out there. We'll see, but we're hoping, we're breaking our asks down to the two things. Hey, what can you do for us in the, in our '25, '26 funding year? Hey, what can you do for us in the 25, 26 funding year? The ask is, we know the legislature always asks for more money. We're asking you to somehow consider districts that have been underfunded to be prioritized on that additional funding list. Again, we'll wait and see what happens. It would take a lot to do that, because there's some influential members from school districts that have been overfunded, they don't want to see, we divert away from them. And I can understand their position, but if they were in our position, I think that things would change much more quickly than they might with me bringing this up for folks. So we're asking that for next year's budget, and then '26, '27 beyond. And if there's a real serious conversation about this foundation aid formula, you have to make sure that it's going to work and run us through as a test case. Because if it diverts money away from us after the last 15 years of money being diverted away from us, that isn't going to work for us, and we're going to have to get much more, we're going to be a lot louder about it. But I feel, it's been great meetings, though, if Kevin wants to chime in, I don't want to make this too long, but this is, all the stuff we do for our kids is really important. This is what drives it all. Without this, we can't do anything. We have great people, if we can't pay them, they won't be here. You know, that's, we have great facilities, if we can't keep them updated, we won't have them. So this is important, and I think we're at a crossroads. If they really take up that formula and really do something different, we need to pay attention to make sure folks have heard what we have to say. Kevin, anything that you need to add, or?
The only thing I would add from the meeting, as we brought up, when it comes to the $84 million number, you look at the opportunities that could have been had in this district for kids. And what happens is, when you have these districts that are on hold harmless, save harmless, they have more opportunities, they come out of school with additional credit hours to help with college and stuff like that, whereas the districts that did not have that opportunity, it just doesn't seem, I keep using the word equitable, it's not equitable that the, some other districts' kids didn't have that opportunity, because you just think about it, you know, it's great when, if your child goes out of school and they have a semester at college, as I'm paying a college bill right now, it's wonderful if you do that, but it's, you look back at that, it's just, that's what I think drives a lot of the fire behind this, is it's just, it's not equitable.
One more thing, Dan. The other thing that Carrie had kind of brought up in the meeting, that she had kind of come into the meeting wondering, was, you know, they had kind of applied in the initial state aid runs with the executive budget, they had just applied increases to districts. And it wasn't clear necessarily how those were allocated, right? Because some of them just didn't make a lot of steps.
Right. Similar schools to us had an 8% raise, and we had 2% raise, yeah.
So I'm sure she'll probably ask that question, and hopefully when the budget comes out, that'll make more sense.
Yeah, good point, for sure. So that's where we're at. So you'll hear more from advocacy committee over the next couple of months as that comes up forward. Hopefully, we're making some headway, if not, you'll hear about it in the next couple of years, because it makes a difference for our kids and our community. And I want to just say, so I've been here, I'm in my fourth year, but many of you have been here a lot longer. I think, you know, Vince might be the, he might be the senior member around the table here. What Hudson Falls has done for their kids despite being underfunded in the last 15 years by $84 million is remarkable and should be appreciated by everybody involved. I say that truthfully from the heart, because that number is ridiculously shocking and appalling. There's like two cents. Probably 45 cents.
Oh, before we move on, the March ASBA is coming up. Unsettled. I know, it's dead now. No. March, so it is ASBA, and it's all budget and advocacy. Lucky ducks, sign up now.
There's always great speakers, they're highly dedicated folks that you hear from.
I mean, it's not the most spiritually uplifting ASBA meeting you're going to go to, but it is always great.
You didn't send a email out for that yet, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That might be our planning meeting.
Yeah, I'm good. If you look at that agenda, and if someone else wants to ask a question about advocacy agendas, I'm happy to talk more, but that's probably plenty for all you folks for this evening, and anybody who's watching from home or three of you sitting out there. Jess has kind of here 10 times, I'm always angry about it, I guess is the right word.
You're definitely beating that drum.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan, Crystal, or Heidi? That concludes our committee meeting. And new business, we do have a field trip report.
Yep, so it's Six Flags, music at the parks. Many of you have already had children who have gone on that trip. It is the same type of trip. It's the middle school, so it's Jesse Stevenson asking for permission. I wholeheartedly support it. The head of the department, Diane Haveren, supports it. Just looking for you to approve that. We don't have you approve all field trips, but those that are going out of state and out of country, we ask the board to support, to approve those. The rest, we approve in-house.
Does anybody have any questions? We have resolved, the Board of Education of the Hudson Falls Central School District approves the middle school ban field trip to Six Flags agreement. Amanda, seconded by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Okay, we do have a need for executive session, are we going to come back in to vote on anything?
We do not need to come back and have any action.
Okay, and that was for the residency determination and the negotiation of this. I stand up.
Second.
Megan, seconded by Heidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.